Good evening, welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 7th. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Chuck Horton to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda for tonight. Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
I got one quickly. Because today, December 7th, I just would ask folks to remember what happened 80 years ago today. And I had a chance watching the news past couple of mornings, and there were a handful of survivors. These guys are 12, youngest one was like 98. Sharp as attack, they could remember what happened, describing it, but we're losing about 1,500 of those gentlemen and ladies every day. That generation's going to be gone. So I think all of us need to think about what they did, not just at Pearl Harbor what happened, but all those young infantrymen that came in at D-Day, in other battles and wars that we've had, Iraq, Afghanistan. But that oldest generation, the greatest generation, we're just losing so many of them. We lost Senator Doyle the other day, the great hero, never gave up. And I think they're role models, and I hope we can live up to them. So that, I just, you know, it caught me, and I just think we all ought to think about them every day, not just the ones that we got in harm's way now, they just, they do more than you'll ever know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a couple announcements. The Friday, December 24th, and Monday, December 27th, county government will be closed for Christmas holidays, and also on Friday, December 31st, to watch Georgia play, not for New Year's Eve. Also, the get tomorrow from noon to 2:00, the courthouse and government offices will be closed for our annual Christmas party for our employees. Next item of business is to approve the minutes. This will be from November 2nd, November 16th, and November 30th.
Make a motion to approve this meeting.
Second.
We have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is rezon. This is rezon number P21-0188. This is Resurgence Park LLC, B2 to B2 with modifications to rezon number 6358. This is 4.8 acres located at 1460 Resurgent Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is P21-0188, Resurgence Park. It's located right off of 316, near O'Conne Connector. This is the aerial shot of the parcel, subject parcel. It is currently zoned B2, and is in the regional center character area. And again, it's the request to rezon, to modify the rezon 63858 in order to allow for medical office use. If you'll remember the previous rezon, I showed a tell on this. This is the concept plan, the 10-year packet showing the proposed new building, Medical Office Building. These are the representative architectural photos that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Planning Commission also recommends approval with the same conditions.
Now, we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman. I live at 1400 Saxon Road in Watkinsville. I'm here tonight representing the purchasers of this property, University Cancer and Blood Center. They're an existing cancer treatment facility over in Athens. They originally bought a lot in Resurgence Park, kind of around, all the way on the other end, next to the assisted living facility, a smaller lot. They were going to build a satellite office. I'll say the same thing I said at Planning Commission. They got excited about coming to O'Conne, decided they want to build a bigger facility in O'Conne County. So now they're purchasing this lot, which is twice the size of what they were going to do. They're going to build a facility that's twice what they were going to do on the other lot. So they're excited to be here. The existing lot, as Guy mentioned, is zone B2, was approved for hotel under the original zoning. The request is to modify that zoning, to change the use from hotel to medical office, which would be less intensive and less taxing on the traffic and utilities in the area. He, Guy briefly showed you the architecture. This is the term representative. This is not representative. This is the actual building they're going to build. We spent a lot of time with architects getting the building to look the way they wanted it. We worked back and forth with Guy to make sure that we were meeting what county wanted to see. So that is exactly what they will build. You'll see on the plan that there is a driveway that goes out to the connector. That is a driveway that was previously approved by GDOT. Years ago, they have re-verified the approval of that driveway. We're actually working with GDOT to maybe shift it a few feet from the original approval. GDOT wants to tie that into their, they're going to have a signal right there, and they want to tie that into their signals. We're working with GDOT to get them exactly what they want so that they're happy with that. The plan will be to start construction next year in 2022, and finish up sometime maybe late 2023, probably early 2024. The staff and Planning Commission have recommended approval on this rezon request, and I'm here to respectfully ask for you guys to approve this on modification as well. And I'm asking pretty questions. You'll come ahead.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Go ahead and close the public comments and open up any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve rezon P21-0188, Resurgence Park, as submitted with three conditions.
Motion second, approve rezon P21-0188 with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item will be rezon P21-0190. This is the Fairways LLC at 316. This is AG going to OIP, and then OIP with modifications to rezon case number 6560. It's 30.823 acres on Langford Drive in Langford State Place. Also, there's a variance along with this one, which is P21-0191, to allow the proposed building to increase the height requirement from 40 feet to 55 feet at that location.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, rezon P21-090190, and a parish request, 191, located just off of 316, Langford Drive. This is the aerial photograph of the subject parcels, the vacant parcel here, and the previously constructed, partially constructed parcel located at 001, off Langford Drive. And again, the current zoning is OIP for this portion, AG for this portion. This is a previously owned GDOT right-of-way that has now entered the same ownership as the OIP parcel. And again, it's in the regional center character area, and the rezon request is to modify rezon 6560, and add the additional acreage to the OIP zoning category in order to develop an assisted living community. Again, this request is accompanied by the special exception variance to go from 40 foot to a 55 foot maximum height for the four-story building. And this is the concept plan that you have in the package, showing the additional acreage here, the two larger multi-story buildings, and the remainder development. That is currently, roads are currently in place. Just an enlarged concept plan. This shows the elevation of the two buildings. The building closest to Jennings Mill will have this elevation. The building along the lake will have the four-story elevation. These are representative architectural renderings of the cottages and clubhouse. Again, this is the two-story building along Jennings Mill for the assisted living and memory care building, and then the independent living building is the taller building, four-story near the lake. Again, staff recommends conditional approval with the following conditions, 1 through 3 are our standard conditions. Number 4, building facade materials for the independent living building and the assisted living and memory care building shall be at least 80% brick or stone on all sides. Number 5, all loading and unloading areas visible for the public right-of-way shall be screened for view. Number 6, lighting templates for other projects shall show one-foot candle or less at all property lines during residential uses for the public right-of-way, and all light poles shall not exceed 20 feet in height. Number 7, all construction and landscaping shall be performed between 7:00, 8:00, and 7:00 p.m. Construction or landscape shall be done on Sunday, New Year's Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, or Labor Day. And number 8, the property line adjacent to State Route 316 shall be screened by a 10-foot wide landscape buffer incorporating one long shade tree for every 40 linear feet of road foliage, and evergreen vegetation will be 6 feet tall at the time planting and farming, and opaque year-round screen. The Planning Commission recommended approval with two changes, or two additions, actually. So condition number 4, they wanted to add, or as otherwise approved by the Planning Director. And condition number 8, they wanted to add an enhanced buffer along the northern property line adjacent to Jennings Mill subdivision, shall be constructed as approved by the Planning Director. The staff recommendations for the variance, the special exception variance are, number 1, our standard condition, and then number 2, the proposed independent living building height shall not exceed 55 feet.
Now, we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ken Bell, Bell &amp; Company, resided at Lickwood Brook Subdivision, and I'm here representing the sellers of the property, as well as the purchasers of the property, David Griffin and Tim Burgess, for the current owners. They purchased the property originally in 2015, and we provided, prepared the plans after they purchased the property for the rezon request to convert the property, the original 24 acres that they purchased, from always previously a, I think it was a par 3 master plan developed, which was a mixture of small lots and townhomes over on the western side of the pond. And so they, we prepared those plans and brought it back in as to do away with the master plan development and just rezon office institution for CCRC, Continuum Care Retirement Communities and related items. I think most of you, maybe with any reason exception, we did that. And then, a few years later, the other six-acre portion, which was not included in the original rezon, became available, and they went ahead and purchased that six acres, hoping that at some point in time, they could add it to the parent parcel and bring it back and develop another project. So over the years, the current owners have looked for people to partner up with to do the CCRC. Just, things just haven't worked out on that front for them. But they were recently approached by the people who have it in the contract now, to just buy the project outright and develop themselves. They've done quite a number of those projects, and have a good experience in retirement communities, particularly assisted living. So as Guy said, the majority, we're trying to salvage as much of the infrastructure as we can. It's already there. It was put in when the master plan development was constructed. All of the roads and infrastructure was put in, but there were not ever any buildings built. So our effort was to come in on those existing roads on the eastern side of the project, and pretty much just put cottages the way the original plans called for, and then to expand the area on the western side of the pond, and to position those buildings in such a manner where the single-story building, the building was the closest to any residential development, separated with a landscape buffer, and the two-story portion of that building was a little further away, but the four-story buildings were the greatest distance away from any residential development. And at the Planning Commission meeting, there was not anyone to speak against the project, but Diane Wright, who is the adjoining property owner, Diane J. O., and she had, even when the original rezon came through, she had asked for some additional buffering, which we agreed to. And at the meeting, we agreed to even more buffering. The purchasers had no problem with providing more buffering for the project, and that is why there was that additional condition modified to address the buffering situation. And then, we had just requested the one minor addition to the representative architecture, 80%, unless otherwise approved by the planning director. It's not because we may want, or the architect may want to have less, it's just sometimes you can have an all-rack building, and it can be made better if it's not all-rack. So we just wanted to give the architects an opportunity to use some other materials if they so choose, to bring the best-looking building across the path. And so we were more than happy to leave it in the hands of the planning director to make sure the intent of that condition is right. So it's a pretty straightforward rezon request. I'm happy to answer any questions of purchasers that is also here, if you have any questions of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hal, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. Hal Grayson, 2620 Forest Way, Atlanta, Georgia. And I'm a partner with Lea, we're the developer, and we're excited to be here in O'Conne County. And we're, right now, we've got projects across the country, and Austin, Houston, Nevada, left in South Carolina, and then locally Johns Creek and Brazelton. And so we really like the Athens market and the site in particular, because it fits in with our other ones we're building in the strategy. And our product, we're doing independent living, assisted living, and memory care, and it's high-end, but it's for rent, so month-to-month. So, you know, it offers a lot of flexibility and choices for the residents, and I'm available to answer any questions, and again, excited to be here.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon or the variance requests? Anyone virtually? Anyone wish to speak against the rezon or the variance request? Anyone virtually? Then we'll go ahead and close the public comment section and open up to questions from commissioners. I got one quick one, Ken, on the shows access back into Jennings Mill Road. Just verifying that's going, is that being abandoned, or will that ever be used?
We did not include that as a portion of the rezon, because we didn't want anyone to think that we were suggesting that it was going to be access to the residential development. It really is a surplus property, and one of the adjoining property owners has wanted to have that for quite a period of time, but because it's under contract, they can't consummate that arrangement. So, but that's one of the reasons why we did not include the rezon request.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The only thing, I do have concern on the conditions where it leaves a lot of discretion to staff version. Some that there's nothing to rip. It happens, falls on him, and I don't think we really need to do that. So I'm not, I think the condition should be what it is, not left, without somebody knowing what it might be.
You don't want to strike in the last, what was added about?
Yeah, I'm surprised. It says that it's approved by the planning director. I don't think, I can't even call what's due in that. The problem is, is the state is, and we're challenged, we're just, hard to, yeah, decisions that one, I think it's a little bit problematic.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Guy, could you, I want to just say to you, if you question the site plan back up on them. I had a question about, not so much the buffer, and I appreciate the additional buffer for those that are living on St. Andrews Drive and Court, but the other side of the project, if you pull up the other, on the, I think you call it, is that Lake Point, right? Yeah, so the Jennings Mill, there's two homeowners right there in that curve. And when I was out there, I don't know, I can't pronounce the name as straight as I can, yeah, that one right there. And it's pretty wide open across there. Is that going to be sufficient enough buffer for those homeowners in Jennings Mill, especially those two lots?
So those are the approved buffers from the previous rezon, and nothing was proposed to be changed from that?
But that's a 10-foot?
I think it's 25, I believe. 25, yes.
And that's a, that's screened year-round, right?
Right, that is planted buffer.
But like I say, I mean, I mean, there'll be, I guess you'd call those cottages or the attached houses in front. But I'm just concerned about, because when I'm sitting there at the entrance, I mean, it's, you can see into those people's backyards, and I'm just concerned about, you know, having a screening there so it can not take away from the landowners, the property owners, their intentions, too. You said that's sufficient, though?
That's what was approved previously, and we will ensure that that's installed at the time of construction.
Do you have any suggestions to clarify condition number 4?
You know, I'm, I believe I'm with Daniel on this, and that, you know, it's much easier for staff to administer these conditions if there is a finite or definitive, you know, the 28.
For example, you could say something like, the planning directors authorized, there is a 75. So you've got to decide what that, what it varies.
And the proposed 80% brick or stone, right, gives them flexibility on the brick and stone, and then the 20% can be alternative, you know, materials that are allowed by the UDC. So there is, there's flexibility built in still. It's not going to be a completely brick building. They'll have, you know, materials to work with.
That's a good point. I want to ask a question about material. Is there any restrictions or rules about the color of the stone and brick?
No. I think it's going to be flamingo pink, though.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion on the rezon P21-190.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make the motion to approve rezon P21-010190, Airways at 316, as with condition 1 through 7, as originally presented, and with the condition of rate amended. And to rezon that, 30.823 acres on Langford Drive, Langford State Place.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second approved rezon request, P21-0190, with conditions 1 through 7 as submitted by staff, and condition number 8 as submitted by the Planning Commission. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hold. Yes, so that would not include the, as per the planning director, but it would include the one where extended buffers along. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Now we're entertaining motion for variance number P twenty one dash zero one nine one.
I make a motion to approve variance P twenty one dash zero one nine one as submitted with the two conditions. Second.
Anyway, a motion and second to approve variance number P twenty one dash zero one nine one with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Now we'll move into personnel matters. Our first item is consider appointments to the board of elections and registration for two four year terms. Again, January one, twenty twenty two and expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion, we appoint John Thomas, Henry III, Doug Hammond, to the board of elections, two appointments, January one to two twenty two to December thirty first, two thousand twenty five.
Second. There we have motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is to consider an appointment to the farmland preservation ranking committee for two, three year terms. Again, January first, twenty twenty two and expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Are we saying the internet's not good enough and I've gone to Canada?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we uh appoint uh farmland preservation committee. James Pageant and Thomas Burner to serve starting January the first of twenty twenty two. Or December thirty first, twenty twenty.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next time is consider appointments to the Oconee County Library Advisory Board. This is for two five year terms, start January first, twenty twenty two and expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
I make a motion, we appoint Rachel K. Watson and Laura French. The two appointments, January first, two thousand twenty two to December thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
We have a motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is consider ratification of a contract for prisoner housing in Oconee County. Sheriff James Hale, law sheriff Gabriel in Oglesworth County have negotiated a contract for Oconee County to house uh prisoners. We appreciate you doing that, Sheriff. That's gonna uh be really good, bring us some money from something that usually costs you a lot of money. That's been reviewed by Daniel, uh Oglesworth County is in agreement with it as well, so we will just need a ratification. If you have any questions, Sheriff Hale is here to answer those, please might have any.
It's also worth a thought, that friendship purpose.
No questions, we'll entertain a motion. Okay, motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Also, there's a similar agreement, uh, the sheriffs worked with the city of Watkinsville to kind of put in writing their processes and procedures they want to follow. This is for the housing, the jail agreement with the city of Watkinsville. Also has been vetted by both councils and is ready for approval. Again, Sheriff Hale is here if you have any questions about that. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the jail agreement with the city of Watkinsville.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item is the presentation of the F Y twenty one audit report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you commissioners for having Ruston back for fiscal year twenty one uh for the audit of the count. You should have in front of you, I handed these out before we got started, you should have a, a letter like this about presentation and then should have a bound audit report. We will spend most of our time, we got, got the report there obviously for you to, for you to look through if you have time as well, but and, and we can ob- obviously refer to it as well if we have questions. But most of our time will spend with these two, these two documents. Um, before I get started uh working through the presentation though, I want to um, as I mentioned, thank you all for having us to do your audit. But also thank the entire uh staff of, of Oconee County. Everyone was very helpful during the audit process. Uh, Wes, Melissa, of course, we bothered the most probably of the, of the team, but uh your department heads all the way down to the individual employees throughout the county were very helpful during the audit process. Made a very smooth process. Obviously, last year was our first year uh doing the audit for, for the county. Uh, this year went, went much smoother, although last year, even though it was first year, was still a very uh smooth process. And that's just testament to folks you got, we're appreciative of that, so I want to thank, thank them for that. So going through the presentation here, in this big bound report, our o- independent audit report is found on pages one, two and three. Uh, that independent audit report is gonna spell out that these financial statements, this big lengthy draft report here or final report here are the responsibility of, of Oconee County's management. Our responsibility as your independent auditor is to opine upon, give an opinion on those financial statements, that they are not materially misstated, uh whether due to fraud or error. We do follow government auditing standards uh in our audit and I'm pleased to present that for fiscal year twenty one. We have an unmodified opinion or clean opinion on the financial statements for twenty twenty one. Nothing came to our attention during the audit with uh prohibited estimation and unmodified opinion. All right, I always call your attention to other, there's really in this big hundred and something page report here, financial report. There's only two statements in that entire report that bring all activities of the county together in one full accrual basis accounting. That's what we call your government wide statements. Those are found on pages fifteen through seventeen, with pages fifteen and sixteen being a statement of net position, uh which is like a balance sheet. And uh the statement of activities on page seventeen is gonna be similar to an income statement. So a few numbers from those statements, net position, which would, excuse me, would be the net position of the county, that's the equity of the county as a whole. It's broken down in three different categories. You've got net investment, capital assets, which is gonna be your um land, buildings, equipment, those, those capital assets, property equipment type items. Less accumulated appreciation on those assets, less any debt utilized to acquire those assets. And that number at June, June thirty, twenty twenty one was one hundred sixty eight million, seven oh eight, one thirty five. Next category being restricted net position, which is gonna be um funds that are restricted from the outside. So a good example there would be uh SPOSS, special purpose local option sales tax. Those funds that you receive from SPOSS that had not yet been expended at year end would be an example there, ten million, two seventy six, one sixty three. And of course, the residual there being unrestricted net position, eleven million, one seventy one, nine oh six. Gives you your total net position of one hundred ninety million, one fifty six, two oh four. For the year, there was an eight million, one hundred eighty four thousand, nine hundred ninety eight dollar increase in net position overall for the county. I noted a few items there, you'll see below that, that kind of contributed to that uh change as far as, although it was a real similar increase in the prior fiscal year in that regard. All right, the general fund, which you all spent a lot of time throughout the year, you probably spent most of your time in the general fund or maybe in some of those SPOSS funds. Uh, but the general fund, of course, is the chief operating fund of the county. Uh, those financial statements are found on pages twenty two and twenty three of the, of the bound report. And for the year, the revenues of the, of the general fund increased four million, nine seventy two, twenty one, or about fifteen percent. A few items contributed to that increase, uh property taxes increased one million, seventy three, six seventy nine. Your T A V T, your title level norm tax increased four eighty, zero nine zero. Uh, local option sales tax, so you're across the state, obviously, that's, that's increasing, uh one million, three fifty two, three oh seven. And then your intergovernmental revenues increased one million, three fifty seven, three ninety six, uh due largely to the uh funds received during the year from CARES Act. Federal, federal dollars, which we'll kind of mention uh in a moment. Um expenditures, those also increased, uh four million, nine seventy one, six fifty eight, or about eighteen percent. Uh, so a few departments there that, that contributed to that increase. Uh, law enforcement department increased five ninety six, one sixty three, due largely to materials and supplies and debt service. Public safety department decreased two fifty four, five oh four, uh was some animal services capital outlay in the prior year. And then the public works department increased three million, four thirty four, eight thirty five due to road maintenance for the most part there in that part. All right, the next slide is a more of a chart or pie chart, I guess we'll call it, not really, this is not really a pie chart, it's a line, line graph, I guess we'll call it here, of the revenues and expenditures for the last three fiscal years. Uh, the expenditure number there includes transfers out, as you know, the, there are several funds that, that the general fund transfers funds to on an annual basis for budget reasons. Uh, so you'll see there for fiscal year twenty one, revenues were thirty eight million, one seventy three, two ninety seven. Expenditures and transfers out, thirty five million, two seventeen, eight ninety four. All right, these next two slides are pie charts here for, kind of give you a breakdown. Rather than me just talking numbers so you can see it on, on, on paper here, the uh breakdown of your revenues by source and your expenditures by um function uh in the general fund. So you'll see there, uh, the, the largest part obviously of your revenues are property tax at forty percent, uh followed thereby uh local, our local option sales tax, uh third twenty one percent. And then you've got your T A V T and, and the government revenues, as we just discussed. On the expenditure side, as with almost all governments, the largest percentage uh of your expenditures as far as functions concerned being public safety. As that is what citizens typically expect, is that your public safety would be your largest function. Uh, public works again being, being second there, twenty four percent. And then you've got some general government functions and culture and recreation uh there as well. All right, another large fund you all uh maintain is the Department of Water Resources Fund, found on page twenty seven, bound report. Um, that, as far as the water resources fund for fiscal year twenty one came in almost, almost identical to the fiscal year twenty, as you can see, their operating revenues uh were almost exactly in line, decreased twenty two thousand dollars or point two percent uh for the year. And you can see water sales decreased ninety five, one eighty five, and sewer sales actually increased seventy four, four eighty three. On the operating expense side, again, almost in line with the prior year, decreased thirty two thousand, thirty two dollars, or about point four percent. Uh, a few items contributing there, you had cost of sales and services decreased one fifteen, four ten. Uh, your personal services there increased thirty eight, three twenty five, and depreciation on capital assets increased uh forty five thousand, fifty three dollars. All right, I know you all spent a lot of time talking about uh your SPOSS projects, so I've just laid out here uh what your SPOSS expenditures were for fiscal year twenty one. Those are more details on those expenditures and those projects are found on pages one thirteen and one fourteen. Uh, with the schedule projects, finance, with special purpose local option sales tax. For the year, the county expended eight million, nine forty five, nine eighty four. Of that, forty thousand, five eighty one was expended on the two thousand four referendum. Two hundred fifteen thousand, seven twenty two spent on the twenty, two thousand nine referendum and eight million, six eighty nine, six eighty one was spent on the twenty fifteen referendum. All right, these next two slides, uh you, you see there, I've got uh two other independent audit report that are in this bound report. A little different this year than, than in years past, at least in, in the prior year. Uh, we do have a third letter this year, uh whereas in the past we'd usually just had two. Uh, the independent audit report, which I talked about earlier, gives our opinion on the financial statements. The second letter is therefore on internal control and other matters. This is required by government auditing standards. Of course, we look at po- policies, procedures, processes, those sorts of things in place. Uh, pleased to present that we had no material weaknesses in the controls of the county. Uh, we did note one significant deficiency and had no material non-compliance in the controls of the county. On the uh, the next, the next letter, the third letter, I mentioned, we normally don't, don't typically have, although we probably will have this for the next few years. Uh, and it is due to the fact that the county expended, based on expenditures, not receipts, that the county expended more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds during fiscal year twenty one. So we were required to perform a single audit, which is additional uh audit we have to perform. Again, when you spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, where we look at specifically compliance with specific major programs. Uh, where it considers the calculation goes into what's, what is a major program. But this would be where, had we had any specific issues with a specific or with a major program, we would have to disclose that here. And of course, this is all, the, the single audits also upload to the federal audit clearinghouse. Will actually be uploaded here soon, but it, uh, we did not have any material weaknesses. We had no significant efficiencies, we had noted material non-compliance in relation to the federal major programs for fiscal year twenty twenty one of the county. In my last two slides here, one, I always try to keep uh, try to be proactive with you all to keep you all abreast of the changes that are coming in regards to uh accounting standards. These two I have here, I, I, I more than likely discussed with you last year, one of which was a current reporting change and one of which is a future reporting change. Uh, both, both pretty significant changes. The first being Gatsby statement number eighty four, which was required to be implemented uh for fiscal year twenty one for the county. Uh, what this did briefly uh was what, what used to be called an agency fund, which is gonna be your sheriff's office, your clerk court, uh your probate court, tax commissioner's office. Those were considered to be, called agency funds in these financial statements. They are now called custodial funds. There was also some changes in reporting. Previously, those funds, obviously those monies come in, they go out to someone else, whether it be coming over to the county or whether it's to cities or other agencies in state, those sorts of things. Um, so those funds were required and most of them are paid out on a monthly basis. So any funds that had been received but yet, not yet distributed year end were considered to be due to others, was a liability in other words in those cases. Uh, this reporting changed that, we can now have net position in those funds, so certain items, for example, monies that are held uh for inmates. Cash bonds have not yet gone to court, and things like that, that have not, that, that really require an additional action in order for that to be payable, so to speak, are no longer considered to be due to others, they are now in net position, so they, this reside in equity. They are eventually paid out to another party, but they, that really just changed the county, that's how it's accounted for. So that changed the accounting for those funds, it also required additional statement in here uh for those funds as well. So there was some additional criteria that had to be met this year in this report. Those had, that, that standard has been implemented and is in these financial statements. The next one is Gatsby statement number eighty seven on leases. Um, leases, uh, probably not the first time you all have heard this, but leases are changing. Uh, it's really whether, whether it's government, nonprofit, uh corporate, no matter what, what accounting we're for leases, we're talking about leases are changing. Currently, we account for leases one of two ways, is either an operating lease or capital lease. Um, with a balance sheet effect being there for the capital leases and it's really just income statement, rent, income and rent expense for an operating lease. Uh, this standard is gonna change that, we're no longer gonna have two, two ways to account for leases, we're not going down to one, which will be um closer to the capital lease side of things, which is gonna be, you know, liability and asset there in that regard. Uh, but there are, we've been working on this statement or working with our clients with this for several years, just because it's so large, it has so, pretty much affects all entities. A large, large part of this, I'll say, um, the, the first step in this is, and the first thing this standard does is defines what is a lease. And why that's important is you all might have currently seventeen leases that you have. The problem is you may also have twenty other agreements, whether it be a memorandum of understanding or a contract or an agreement or a resolution or, you know, any type of document that, that, uh, that you may not call a lease. But when you really read through it, it meets the definition of what this standard calls a lease and is required to be accounted for underneath the standard. So what we're basically saying at this point is we need to make sure we accumulate all those agreements or documents to see if it applies first of all, and then of course, start implementing. Uh, so we've, we've got this kind of interactive spreadsheet, we're gonna be sending out or have sent out, and basically say, put it here, and it's a drop down box, these are the questions, is this supply, these are, you know, drop down, basically user friendly way to assist clients in, in implementing this. And then, of course, there's gonna come a time where we gotta put the deficits and credits on paper, but that, that time is coming in the fiscal year you're in right now. So come this time next year, I'll be standing here saying, we implemented Gatsby statement number eighty seven. So come this time next year, I'll be standing here saying, we implemented Gatsby Statement Number eighty seven, and I hope I'm saying it's, it was a very smooth, easy process. But it is going to be a, a barrier to implement there in that regard. That concludes my information on the numbers, unless you all have specific questions. I do have a real quick one run through, I know you've got a lot of business. Couple of quick things here with this letter as well, unless you have questions. All right, this letter, I'm going to be very, very brief with this. This is some required communications, so I am required to communicate this to you. I will say, had this letter had something that was not boilerplate information, that's the same as it probably was last year, other than a few date changes, you would have known about this long before now. This would be where I would communicate any concerns I had, any difficulties I had dealing with management, any difficulties I had performing the audit, all of that would be communicated and writing to you here. But I promise you, I would not wait till now to be communicating that to you, you would know long before now. However, I do have none of those items to, to communicate to you. I did already communicate that there wasn't one new accounting standard, that was Gatsby Statement Number eighty four, that did apply to these financial statements. We also have to let you know that note two is where you'll find the significant accounting policies for Oconee County. I was joking with Commissioner Horton earlier about when you're struggling to sleep at night, that's the first page to turn to, because that, unless you're an accountant, is not going to be enjoyable reading more than likely to you. And even as accountants sometimes struggle with that information, but at any rate, that, that is note two. We, we, these, these statements do have estimates in them, as pretty much all financial statements do have estimates in them. We're required to let you know that we fill out the most sensitive estimates are the life expectancy of your capital assets, how long they're depreciated, and the allowance for doubtful counts on your accounts or property tax receivables. I mentioned to lead, lead this all off, we had no difficulties dealing with management, they're very pleasant, providing what we needed, even though we were bothering them quite often. We do have journal entries from time to time that we will adjust, we provide those to management. We do also have from time to time adjustments that are immaterial or items we come across that are immaterially different that we pass on adjusting. We do accumulate those and make sure in total, in the aggregate, those are also nonmaterial. We also provide a copy of those. Probably the most important thing, in my opinion, in this letter is the, on the second page there, management representations. We, of course, audit, we ask for a lot of documentation, we ask a lot of questions during the audit process. However, we can only audit what we receive or what we're told. So we get a letter, we're required to have this letter in our file signed by management that basically says, they answered the questions to the best of ability, they basically didn't withhold any information or documentation from us that may change your opinion on the financial statements on purpose. Obviously, it may ask something, they answer the best of bill, and it, it may not be exactly what we wanted to know, but they wouldn't intentionally do that, that we have that signed letter. That is pretty much what this letter spells out, like I said, these are required communications, and so nothing overly significant in that regard.
Any questions for Clay? Thank you very much.
Appreciate you all.
Next item is the sale of county property by sealed bid. This is the ward building and the elections building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get into the surplus property, I'd like to thank Clay, did a great job, and I'd also, sincere, if you'd like, thank Sheriff for opening up his doors down there, and all the constitutional officers in the department has did a great job. And Clay laughs at that phone twelve months, every day of the year if I need it, and we're about to get this thing submitted to the state in record time. I appreciate that. Onward, surplus property, sale of Oconee County property by sealed bid. So we have two properties that are considered now surplus. Property A is at Tin Court Street, it's commonly known as the elections building. And property B is on Third Street, and it's commonly known as the ward building. My request tonight is authorization to declare surplus and put it up for a sealed bid. We'd run in the paper next two weeks, and I come back for you on January sixth with the results of the sealed bid. We don't have to take those bids, it's right of the board to decline all offers. But it's just something that we discussed, and if Justin or Daniel have anything to add at this point, then that's my request. Obviously, with the need of the administrative building in the future, this would be surplus property.
You know, it's something we talked about a few months ago out in, in session, just with property values like they are, it might be a good time to get moving. So there'll be specific dates set up for people to come and view the properties. We do have a survey that was completed on both properties in the last month. So all that, I will be available for bidders to look at. Any questions?
Go back to the, the question that I had to ask when we talked about this previously, how direct this, as far as the parking. I know, especially with the election building, is, is some of that property behind there belong to the other landowners around me? As far as people ingress, degress, go behind the building, is that a common area or?
There's, on plan, it shows an alley.
At what?
As an alley.
Yeah.
We don't really know what that means. But there is parking, if you pull in that driveway, there is parking next to the building. On the other side of the driveway, it is something by property owners.
So, so as far as getting behind the building, do you go, would they cross someone else's property lot, or is they always going to be able to remain on the property that they buy?
They could, they will might own that driveway, which.
Yeah, we have four parking spots that we can access from our side. The alley is the unclear part, but, but peers on the survey, we own more of the alley than we originally installed.
And then I guess my other point, I want to make sure, is, I mean, is there going to be expectation that they utilize the county's parking lot for?
That will be a gratuitous somehow.
What?
That will be a gratuitous if we gave them some use of our parking. They can use it just on purpose.
But, okay, so that would be part of the purchase as far as having any guaranteed use of our park.
Not anymore than any other business owner has.
Any other questions? We entertain a motion to allow the advertisement for sealed bids of those two properties. No motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent agenda? With that, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as submitted.
We have motion second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. We have no need of an executive session, so Commissioner Saxon.
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you.